Will the June 13, 2016, Wissickin District Board of Directors meeting please come to order? Mrs. Durkusch, will you please roll call the board?
Thank you, Dr. Becker. Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Mrs. David?
Here.
Mrs. Di Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Here.
Mr. Stoloff?
Here.
Mrs. Walsh?
Here.
Dr. Becker?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in its own nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome to all of our guests and visitors to our regularly scheduled public board meeting of the Wissickin School District Board of Directors. As a note, the board met an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss matters related to contract negotiations and personnel. Before we move on to recognitions and celebrations, I'd just like to take a moment in recognition and support of the victims of the shooting in Orlando and their families. So, just a quick moment, please. Thank you. And now, I'd like to move on to honors, recognitions, and celebrations, and I would like to ask Tonight, we have the distinct pleasure of honoring Mr. Scott Walpert for his many years of outstanding service to the Wissickin School District. Since September of 2000, Scott has served as special education attorney and has shared responsibilities as one of two solicitors from the Timity Knox Firm. Beneath Mr. Walpert's picture on the Timity Knox website is the following quote, "Preparation is the key to success." These words exemplify your performance here at Wissickin. The job of a school solicitor goes well beyond attending legislative meetings of the board and providing legal counsel. You know that, right?
Yes, I do.
[laughing]. As this quote suggests, a solicitor's work involves hours of study and preparation to be able to present the many facets of a legal problem or concern. Mr. Walpert was very skilled in this area. He was also very successful and patient when one of us, one of us, would inevitably say, "Could you translate that, please?" And you would so skillfully translate it from legal language to layperson's language, and we are very grateful for that.
Thank you.
We're not done yet.
So, Scott's influence and advice has been invaluable, as he's helped us guide a course through the district's challenging times. With regards to cases related to special ed, his respect for the students' unique learning needs was always evident. Scott not only provided legal counsel and advice, he was our mentor and advisor with respect to the impact of decisions and the potential course they would chart for the district. On a personal note, my first introduction to Scott was several years ago in the not-so-enjoyable time where we were reviewing Madison. And I recall standing up at the podium, talking, and having Mr. Walpert remind me that I had 30 seconds. And I, but I got past that, so I only had 30 seconds. But I do remember those days, Scott.
We should try that.
For me? Yeah, no. No, it didn't work then, it probably wouldn't work now. So, nonetheless, in my time on the board, I've had the opportunity to get to know Scott better. I've sat in the boardroom with him and reviewed some of the cases that we've had to contend with and some of the issues that we've had to navigate through. And Scott, from my standpoint, your professionalism, your demeanor, your care in making sure that we understood all the ins and outs of what was going on and that we clearly understood sort of where our decisions would take certain things was invaluable. I personally am going to miss your presence here at the table, sitting in the back room discussing some of the topics that we discussed with regards to taxes or some of the special ed cases. I just value those times, and I can tell you that my perception of you four years ago is a long distant memory from what it is today, and I just appreciate all the work you've done for us in the district. So, congratulations. So, on behalf of the school district and its board of directors, we sincerely say thank you for your service and white counsel over the many years. Thank you very much. Thank you, Scott. And with that, you get a very nice plaque.
[inaudible]
Yeah, sure. So, it says, "Presented to Scott H. Walpert for distinguished service to the board of school directors and the children of the Wissickin School District. Timity Knox, LLP, 1975 to 2016." Thank you very much.
Wish you all the best.
Yes, absolutely. Mike, it's yours. Do you have 30 seconds? No.
He had to get that one in. I actually gave him three minutes. I just want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure. I've worked here pretty steadily for the last 15 years, 16 years, and worked on many different things, and I've had the benefit of working with many great board members, past and present, and administrators, past and present, teachers, staff members, supervisors, friends. For me, it's been a great experience. I've learned a lot. We've had many, I think, good results, sometimes some difficult situations we work through. I've gotten the opportunity to observe people working for the benefit of children, and that's really the best part of this job. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I wish the best to the district in the future. Thank you.
We'll now move on to public comments. I have two blue sheets here. Mr. Jim Reese. Just a reminder that it's the policy of the board not to engage in dialogue during public comments, but please know we are listening and paying attention, and when appropriate, the administration will post answers to questions or comments on our website.
I'm a 30-year resident of Lower Gwinnett, and I am, like a lot of retirees, do not appreciate it when local representation spends my money, and that's the way I look at it. As someone who has been very apathetic towards local political matters, I recently heard about a $21 million swimming pool. I couldn't believe the number. I thought I was wrong, but then I read in the, I pulled it up on the internet net, and sure enough, that's the number, 21 million. So, what I would like, I'd like to have two questions answered, honestly. Do you school board members consider retirees when you're spending our money? Okay? I don't think you do. I mean, it's only going to hurt me $200 a month, but there's thousands of people on Lower Gwinnett that are retired and have never used the Wissickin School District. And the second thing is, with my background in construction, have you gotten any estimates on the renovation of the existing pool? And I'd like to know that answer. And if they were estimates, how many did you get, and what were the numbers?
Before the reading of my speech and the final vote on the nondiscrimination of transgender and gender expansive students vote, I would like to share a quote that was very influential to me during this process. "Our greatest fear is not that we are inadequate, but that we are powerful beyond measure." Frederick Douglass. The board need not be reminded of its duty to foster and maintain a safe and inclusive learning environment. Tonight, Wissickin will move towards nondiscrimination or defy not only its own principles, but also the President of the United States. After this decision, students will wear district pride or bear its shame. Consider all concerns, but let us not give in to the fear that fractures unity. Transgender people are not a threat. Reasoning that alleges otherwise led to decisions like Plessy versus Ferguson. Separate is not equal. Schools are for education and therefore the eradication of ignorance. When fear teaches, skewed perceptions become fact, and bigotry is one of the most dangerous forms of fiction. Transgender people are often slandered as pedophiles or posers. Both African-Americans and homosexuals have undergone similar misrepresentations. Although we have some differences inside and out, we're all the same in that we have to take gym class and use the bathroom. One of the few things that differentiates my struggles is that my rights have eventually became protected by law. Our motto at the high school is "Pay it Forward," which encourages students to help those in need, which is my purpose here tonight. As the lesbian child of an interracial couple, my existence has a history of invalidation and misrepresentation. However, tonight I come here not only as a queer person and also one of color, but moreover as the former co-president of the high school's Gay-Straight Alliance. The duties bestowed upon me with this position were not only to plan meetings, but also to foster a place for discussion within Wissickin about issues that concern our school and the larger queer community. I vowed to myself that I would not only fight for the students and with them, but also to reinforce that through the gains and losses, that they are never, ever alone. Although my charge is but a small group and the district's is much larger, we are both acutely responsible for the care of our transgender students. It is no longer possible to refuse to see them, and therefore their needs must be not only considered but met, and their identities validated. Pass the policy and take a step towards equality and away from institutionalized discrimination. Do not blaspheme our claim to be no place for hate by painting transgender people as predators because they are preyed upon by a long list of stigmas reinforcing the importance of safe and inclusive spaces. When transgender people are denied the correct sex-specific facilities, their lives are endangered, not only by others, but also by themselves. Let us not dismiss their needs as minority stress, determined for difficulties faced while existing as a queer person because institutionalized discrimination creates isolation leading to poor self-esteem and mental health. We need inclusivity because, according to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, 16% to 32% of transgender people have attempted suicide at least once in their lives. Seeing my classmates exist openly as we pass in the halls, having the honor of calling some of them friends, they embolden me to embrace myself, so I'm fighting to keep them around. We tell members of our Gay-Straight Alliance that there is space for them wherever they are willing to carve it out. I repeat this to myself when people stare at my family in the grocery store or whisper behind my back at church. But when the harassment intruded upon class time, my teachers stopped it because, in their words and mine, "I don't deserve this treatment." No one should fear that their school cultivates fear. Instead, they must know that exploring identity is as important as any one of their courses. When we fail to safeguard against discrimination, we teach that those who refuse to hide and apologize for being themselves are deserving of mistreatment. Instead of promoting pride in diverse identities, we show that those who are different are, by that classification as an other, their own greatest threat. Reverse this trend and teach that their power comes from tolerance for others that starts at acceptance of oneself. Regardless of how they identify, students deserve validation and protection. In this country, according to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, queer youth account for 30% of reported suicides. If not for the inclusivity of the Wissickin environment that some staff members do their jobs to cultivate, I would be among those numbers sacrificed to bigotry. By allowing discrimination, we not only institutionalize inequality, but also teach students that they are unprotected by their basic Title IX rights as well as undeserving of basic respect. Tonight, I come to you because of a core belief that my language arts teacher encouraged all of us to define. For me, it is not simply equality, but essentially compassion. I believe that promoting tolerance and validating experiences and identities is not only my duty as the leader of the Gay-Straight Alliance, an expression of my Christian kindness, but moreover a duty to be compassionate. If defending my fellow students by defending this policy creates harsh whispers or stares, it's a normal day. The target on my back is never going away, and neither is the district's duty to do its best for its students. Although we all fear inadequacy, I would like to remind board members during the vote that they too are powerful beyond measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Christine De Laurentis.
Good evening. It's a hard thing to follow up. This evening, the board will be considering the recommendation for an approval of the planned course of study for the World Language Program, Grade 7 to 12. Interestingly, it says 7 to 12. Back in November or December, when it was first, when this new curriculum was first presented, it was stated that they were going, they were talking about removing the sixth grade language program due to the changing middle school schedule. Now, we all know that that isn't happening. So, I surmised that we were going to keep our language, but obviously, according to this, it doesn't look that way. It was very clear during the meeting discussing that middle school's schedule change that parents and educators were not supportive, supportive of doing away with this current, with the current sixth grade World Language Program. There were many, many people that listed all of the amazing reasons why we should keep this exploratory program, allowing each student a full quarter of, for each of the four languages. I know my daughter went through that program in sixth grade, and it honed her idea of taking French. That was her intention going into middle school, and she did continue with French, but she also got an exposure to, you know, a full quarter of exposure to German and to Spanish and to Japanese. In two years, my son will be in sixth grade, or a year and a half now, whatever, and I want him to have that same opportunity of that true immersion for a whole quarter, not just a meeting two or three times for each less, for each language. I behoove you to reconsider doing away with this program if that's the case, because it does not say sixth grade in this, in this information. It just says seven through 12.
Next, Karen C. Malino? Malino.
I've been a resident of Lower Gwinnett for approximately 50 years. I went through Wissickin High School. My grandchildren have gone through Wissickin. My children have, and some of my great-grandchildren may be going too. So, I've always been proud of Wissickin, and I know they do a wonderful job with the kids. First off, I'd like to say I really feel sorry for this young woman. I've never walked in her shoes. I wouldn't want to walk in her shoes. And I can't feel what she feels, but I can feel the emotion, and I can feel the heartbreak, and she must be going through a lot. But, Wissickin, as I know it, is not violating any laws by allowing the bathrooms to stay the way they are. We do protect all of the children, and if they're being picked on, then the school has to do something about the certain situations, not the bathrooms. And if you think about it, it's not only going to affect the bathrooms at the school, the locker rooms, the showers. This will then spread everywhere, to the schools, to Sesame Place, to Hershey Park, where they've already proved that transgenders can go in the showers. I'm not afraid. I'm not upset with transgenders. That has nothing to do with this law. The law is the human body. Would you, would you fathers want your uncles taking showers or disrobing in front of your, in front of your daughters? I mean, get real. A man's body, a woman's body is not the same. There is no way to govern who belongs in that locker room. If you ask, you could be, not arrested, but you could be, have a lawsuit if you asked them what their gender is. Are you going to give them a card? Is there going to be somebody at the door making sure that these people belong there? I was told that the coaches of the sports team and the principal should be the ones governing the locker rooms and the showers. Well, I have a friend in Upper Dublin who is a male, and he is the coach of the soccer team, and they're females. I don't want that male going through the locker rooms to check. That's not his job. Teachers' jobs are to teach, not to be watching out in the locker rooms and the bathrooms. There has to be a better way. You go into other areas, they have family bathrooms. Change the bathrooms. Make them family rooms. Change the shower rooms. Make them family shower rooms or individual shower rooms where a male or a female individually will go in there. It's not anything about that. It's the body. It's the human body that is at issue. Men's bodies are not the same as women's. I don't want my great-grandchildren in Sesame Place changing with a man there. I don't want her looking at a man's body. And the same thing in the school district. I went to Wissickin High School. I would not have wanted a boy because he emotionally feels like a woman to be in there changing with me. That, it doesn't belong there. And this is the beginning of opening the door that everywhere, if this goes through, it's going to be everywhere, locker rooms. Women, think of it. Do you go to an exercise place in a locker room? You go to the restroom in the mall? Men, do you want women walking in and watching you urinate? It's not, it's not acceptable. It is not. So, I really hope you people think about it. You've done wonderful jobs with the school so far. It's not a law yet. Governor Wolf hasn't approved it. So far, no school has ever lost any funding because of a situation like this, and you can fight it. Think of your daughters. Think of your sons, your grandchildren. But really, think about, this is very important.
Thank you. Carnahan, sorry.
Yes, James Carnahan, 567, Sketback Pike, Blue Bell, Pennsylvania. I moved up here two years ago from the city, and part of the process, obviously, was looking at communities where taxes are low. We looked at Upper Dublin because my wife and her family grew up and lived in Upper Dublin, but when you do a house comparison on the assessment of each houses, they pay substantially a lot more in taxes. And then, being new to, being a new pupil to this process of budgets, I realized, you know, after sitting through the meeting last week, the finance meeting, that that's because they carry a lot of debt, and they have to pass that on to what I call the shareholder of the community, the residents. So, for me, and I wanted to say that I appreciate everybody's time that you put into the board. I know sometimes it can be a thankless job, but you sign up for it. So, with that comes the congratulatory type kind of comments, and then sometimes you get the harsh comments coming from a city guy. So, I sat in that meeting last week, and I was actually kind of shocked, you know, being formerly a managing partner with a company that did $90 million, small company, Mid-Atlantic, that how cavalier and how unsophisticated that meeting, finance meeting, was to discuss such a tax burden to fixed income, low income. And let's face it, 63% of Americans can barely muscle up $1,000 in the event there's an emergency. But to sit there and have the cavalier to say, you know, "We're just going to go on this chart. We're going to look at these taxes, and we're going to go for the biggest one." I feel like you're looting the community and the shareholder because you have this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to grab this money from the hard-working people in this community. Not everybody lives in the $2 million home. Not everybody lives in a $1 million home. I think the average home in Whittapank Township where I live is about $500,000. And as Americas, as American, we make money and we spend money. So, is there really any money? I always say, when you come to me with a tax, I look at it from a weak perspective. I got to work two and a half days just to get paid for two and a half days. So, I work five days, two and a half, I make no money, then I make money on the next two and a half days. Now, with all these proposed taxes, you know, now I got to work three days to get, and only get paid for two out of the five days I work. So, I didn't hear any discussion in that meeting about how this might affect low income or how it's going to affect fixed income. It was just an opportunity to grab money so we can have it, and there was no plan. So, I feel as if, you want to tax people, you need to have a plan, and you need to share that plan with people. It's just not, you come together, you sit there, you go about a process, and then you listen to the, you know, I guess the CF, you know, the chief financial officer, I'm not really sure of your, of your title. Nobody's asking, "How much are we borrowing? How much are we going to borrow for, for debt servicing?" There was no, there was no level of sophistication. I used to sit in three days of budget meetings, and I didn't understand the process. But being new here, I'm trying to get my feet wet, trying to figure out how this process works. So, for me, I'm concerned about those people that really can't afford the money. So, that's why I'm here. I'm here on their behalf. And to end, so the question that I have is, with the money that we're going to take from the shareholders of the community, what's the plan? Are we going to use it? And if we are, what's the plan? Are we just going to shove it in some general fund, which I thought I heard, general fund? So, is it going to sit there? We all know, you have money in your pocket, you spend it. That's just what we do. So, the question, I guess, is, what's the plan for the money? And then, I guess, to end my statement, and I'll follow up with Mr. Walpert's motto, preparation is the key to success. I didn't see any of it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, we move on to the report of the secretary, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you. We present for approval the May 23, 2016, meeting minutes.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any corrections to the minutes? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next, just the notation of the next meeting dates, which are August 15, 2016, 7:30 p.m. in the administrative offices, and June 21 at 5:30 p.m., a goal-setting session here in the administrative offices. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Next, we have report of the treasurer, Coleman.
Thank you. We present for acceptance and minuting the treasurer's report for May 2016 per document A1.
So moved.
Second. The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Not all those in favor say aye. Opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, number seven on the agenda is report of the board president. There are 11 motions in my report this evening. So, unless any board member requests differently, they will be prevented, presented for approval as follows. Motion A and B will be presented together. Then, motions C through J will be presented together. Motion K will stand alone, and motion L, which is on your blue sheet, will also be voted on as a single item. Are there any other motions of these 11 motions that any board member would like to see taken separately? Okay.
Sure. Can you say it again? A may be done, and then C through J, and then K is separate?
K is separate and L is separate. L is the blue sheet. L is the blue sheet. So A and B basically are the budget. C through J is a mixture of financial motions that Mr. Coleman is going to briefly address before we vote. All right, so we're good?
Dr. Becker, there's no L.
The L is your blue sheet.
One is it not?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so motions A and B are asking for approval, well, motion A is looking for approval of the final expenditure budget in the amount of $95,86,629 per Document One, for fiscal year, per Document One. And motion B is approval of resolution of NW 816, setting a millage tax rate, enacting an interim real estate tax rate, and establishing a 10% penalty on taxes not paid within the four months of due date, per Document Two, administrative offices. This budget requires a 4.51 increase in real estate millage, which equates to 18.79 mils.
So moved.
Second. The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments?
Yes, Dr. Becker has some comments. So I wanted to comment regarding two of the questions we had today. One was around the pool, the first person commented around, the second one was around the budget meeting that we had last Monday? Yeah, last week, sorry. So two things. One is, we'll get the answers to your questions up on the website and the answer to both your questions are yes. The pool facility, actually, I don't think comes in at 21, I think it's 18 point something million. And it's actually primarily not just a, it's actually not just a pool, it's actually a central plant facility as well that's going to feed all the facilities in this immediate vicinity in terms of the schools. I've been on the board for two and a half years and we've been discussing that topic for two and a half years, so we can't go over everything, but I'm happy to talk to you one-off on, if you'd like to do that. And the second question you had regarding, do we take low-income households and fixed-income households into the equation? The answer is yes. There's been conversation around the impact of the increase in the millage rate to the community at large. We recognize that we have a diverse community between fixed income and low income. We do try to take all things into account and at the end of the day, the proposed budget is what was put forth. The second comment regarding the budget meeting from Thursday night, I would always comment that we've had ongoing meetings for several months now. Generally, it's us and two or three other folks, so it is something we do talk about. I know that generally in the abstract, it may not seem like there's a lot of comprehension going on and what you sort of saw the other night was the concept of potentially trying to come through with a lower budget and the convert, or excuse me, a lower budget and millage rate increase. And where we ended was the concept that we have long-term capital needs in this district over the next five years that exceed $25 million. Currently, for those long-term capital needs, we have about $18 million available to us today. And so between now and the next five years, we have to generate incremental revenue to cover just our basic capital maintenance for all of our facilities, including the administration building, the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school. And so it's not as though we are frivolously increasing taxes because we can. We do have the privilege of being able to have a certain tax increase this year, but this district historically has not had a tax increase in nine of the last 10 years. And so as a school board member, I try as best as I can to be frugal with the money that we spend. We could have done a lot more at that central plant pool facility and we didn't because of the concept that we needed to maintain some fiscal responsibility around the budget. But there are core fiscal needs in this district that need to be addressed. And if we're not preparing ourselves for that future, then two or three years from now, we're going to find ourselves in an even tighter predicament because with the cost of labor, with the cost teachers' retirement, and with the needs of the district, we wouldn't be able to generate enough revenue to cover all of that. And so we're taking the opportunity now to plan for our future. And it seems like a lot and I appreciate and respect that perspective, but understand that the millage rate is going from 17.8 to 18.7. It's a 4.5% increase on the millage rate, not a 4.5% increase on your assessment. So with that, I'll close my comments and, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. I also have a couple of comments.
Okay.
I want to begin by expressing appreciation to Mr. Coleman, Mr. Matthews, and Beth Valerio for all, and everybody, the board, for all their time and hard work spent on this budget. The 2016-2017 budget is reflective of a board that values an investment in public education with a specific desire to increase the debt service line in the budget. The purpose of increasing the debt service line is to provide the district capability to address future facility needs and wants. At the last finance meeting held on June 6, at the request of the board, Mr. Coleman provided four levels of taxation scenarios along with their contribution to the debt service. They were 2.8%, 3.5%, 4.0% and 4.5%. Nine board members were present at this meeting and after polling the board, the majority stated that they were in favor of a 4.5 tax increase. I am not in agreement. I favor a lower increase of 4.0%. The 4.5% increase would balance the budget and add $786,118 to the debt service line, which in turn would allow us to borrow $17,723 and $386. A 4.0 increase, which is not insignificant, would allow us to balance the budget and add $464,524 to debt service. This in turn would allow borrowing up to $12,577, $12,577, $887, an amount that would cover the cost of a potential middle school auditorium and more. Given that currently there are no established plans for construction projects beyond an auditorium, of which we already have enough in debt service to cover, I question the need to tax the maximum of 4.5%. Reducing the increase to 4.0%, which I agree is still a significant tax increase, will send an important signal to the community. It will demonstrate an awareness that many of our taxpayers are already working hard to pay their bills or are living on fixed incomes. As this board strives to provide the highest quality public education, we must also practice a fiscal awareness for the individual taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a comment also. I just wanted to go off of some of the things that were said here and put a little bit of perspective in mind. When we're talking about a 4.5% tax increase on the assessed value of the mid-range home, that equates to approximately a $400,000 home in the area. And the, for a 4.5% increase, that equates to $167 a year, which in turn is $14 a month in an increase. I know people on fixed incomes, that that $14 could be a lot of money, but it's something that we feel is needed in the district for our future goals. Mrs. Becker's talking about the 4.0 increase, that equates to $149 a year. The difference between the 4.0 and the 4.51 is $19 a year or $1.50 a month is the difference. So from going to a 4.5 to a 4.51, we're talking about an additional $19 a month on a home that's valued at approximately $400,000.
Just one correction. The $167, I believe, is for a home that's for $205,000.
No, that's the assessed value.
Oh, okay.
That's the assessed value, which equates to approximately a $400,000 sale price. It's harder to look at, when you're looking at an assessed value and you see 200 and you think your house is worth 400, it is the same thing. The $400,000 home is about $167 a year. And the other point that I wanted to make about the finance meeting that we had the other day, one thing to keep in mind with that meeting is, that was the last of many, many meetings. It was basically the culmination or our end product being discussed. So we had already discussed, to the gentleman's point, we had already had many, many, many intricate discussions on the minutest details of the budget. I don't want him to come away from that thinking that we just walked into a budget meeting and said, yeah, 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 let's tax to the highest amount. That is not what happened. This has been basically almost a year's worth of meetings and that was just the last one where we were basically figuring out what we wanted to do in our end product. And that the $21 million, again, is not just a pool, it is a central plant, which is very much needed. And I believe the central plant is over $5 million, $6 million, $9 million. So that's where those two numbers come. I know that that 29, or that 21 million gets lumped into being called the pool, which it is not just the pool. It is a huge undertaking for many things that is, that are needed in the facilities in this area. Thank you.
Mrs. Walsh, I really appreciate, you know, the dialogue, but it is important to note that that $167 is in addition to the $3,500 that someone in that home is already paying.
I would just like to comment and I I agree with what you said. Thank you for saying that.
I just have another comment. The statement was made that you moved into our area because of our low taxes. Even if the increase, the full 4.51 increase is voted on and approved tonight, Wessex Hickon will still have the lowest tax rate in Montgomery County. Nobody likes to raise taxes. You could not be on this board without living in Wessex Hickon. We all pay taxes, all nine of us, and we will have to pay more as well. We understand that it is very uncomfortable, that people are very unhappy having any kind of increase. But for the long-term financial health of our school district, to be able to take care of our buildings and most importantly, our students into the future, we have to have a capital fund that is large enough to take care of the repairs, renovations, and possible rebuilding of perhaps two buildings within the next five to 10 years. That's an enormous amount of money and we have to build this borrowing ability and this is the way to do it. Our district for many years raised no taxes, did not raise taxes. But to accomplish that, they cut, uncut, and used attrition to avoid making some major decisions. They did away with the debt service so that we did not have the ability to borrow money to build the high school, which some people think we desperately need. Some people disagree that it only needs perhaps to be half-completely rebuilt or renovated. But that's still an enormous amount of money. We can't do it right now. One of the first things that Dr. Chrisfield did when he came to the board is gave us the bad news. Sorry, you can't do that. And decisions were made in the past, we are paying for them, all of us. Taxpayers, board members, and most importantly, students are paying for decisions that were made in the past that limited our ability to do what we know is necessary to sustain our school board through the future, our school district through the future. And it's not like you build a building and it's done. You never have to spend any more money. It's a never-ending proposition, especially with the size of our buildings, the number of them and the scope of the, and how they're spread through the district. We are doing what is necessary, what we feel is necessary, and I think if you had attended all these meetings, you would come to realize we really gritted our teeth and had many sleepless nights considering this. But we, but I feel, and I think the majority of the board feels as well, that we are making the right decision if we increase the taxes to 4.51%.
I also have a comment. I would just like to concur with Mr. Stoloff and I think that it's prudent for us to do this right now. We are stewards of this very, very fine school district and it's our responsibility to maintain a budget that allows us to maintain the buildings and all the good things that are here at this district. And I think this is our chance to be conservative in some ways and to create a pool of funds that will allow us to maintain these buildings and/or build what we need to in the future. And I think that's a commitment that a number of us made when we ran for school board, that that was an important thing for us to consider.
Any other comments? Okay.
I may. Please. I'd like to thank all the others for their comments. Mr. Honeycutt, I think, right on the mark when he mentioned that we have a good deal of facilities issues that we're going to be facing in the future and we're not going to be able to deal with those if we don't do something now to put ourselves in a financial situation to do that, to deal with them. We don't enter into this decision lightly. We have discussed it for quite some time and have come around to this thinking. Whether you use the school district directly to educate your children or not, we all, living in the district, do benefit from maintaining an excellent educational system. And I think this is the responsible and prudent thing to do for the community and for our children.
Other comments? Okay, then I'd like to bring forward a motion, approval of motions A and B per Documents One and Two.
So moved.
Second. Motions, oh, all in favor, we had our comments. What's that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. No.
Mr. Antonio?
Aye.
Mrs. David?
Aye.
Mrs. Di Pietro?
No.
Mr. Frank?
Aye.
Mrs. Hayman?
Aye.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Stoloff?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Dr. Becker?
No.
Seven yes, two no.
Motion passes. Next, I am looking for approval of motion C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, per Documents Three through Seven.
So moved.
Second. Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any comments? Mr. Coleman, would you mind giving a brief explanation?
Sure, thank you. So the motions for W 916 and W 1016 relate to the ability for both to pay or businesses to pay under the installment tax, installment payment plan, payment plan. They have the ability to do three payments and receive, pay at the face value. Item D is the resolution enacting earned income tax and the transfer tax. Item E is the resolution relating to the homestead and farmstead exclusion, which is property tax relief and which we are fortunate, this year, we received an additional $6. So actually, the amount will be $161, not $167. F is allowing, and so are G and H, they're basically allowing the business office, myself, specific specifically, to enact certain things not at a legislative meeting in order to keep the operation running. The first one is F, which is financial instruments and various other things to allow us to invest excess cash and whatsoever. G is releasing and making payments in order to take care of the discount, in order to just pay the bills and make sure that we're paying off our obligations. H is that we are able to put together the advertisements, to put together the bids, to bid those items, and then we can't enact the bids. We need to come back to the board. Obviously, we come back through facilities and finance, but that allows me to put together those items with my staff, and I think that's as far as we're going with these motions.
A quick comment, Mr. Coleman, of all the components here, C through J, some of these are quote-unquote "new," correct? Or increases, standard, or standard votes come about?
Right. So, I missed "I," which is allowing us to do budgetary transfers. That's also consistent year to year, to Mr. Honeycutt's point. J is also consistent. The only thing we discussed at the finance meeting was allowing the, B, to allow $10,000 change orders as opposed to $5,000 change orders. That's the only dollar change to all of these items.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Motion's passed. Next, we have item K, recommendation for approval of the appointment of student board representative and alternative. Junior representatives' term begin July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2018, and we will be welcoming Aiman Goucher and Alexis Smith as the alternative. May I please have a motion for appointment of the junior student board representatives, Aiman Goucher and Alexis Smith, alternative, for their term beginning July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2018? So moved. Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments?
Yes, I have one, hopefully, brief comment this time. When we were interviewing the candidates, it was amazing. We all know Wissickin students are great, but these two candidates who were presenting their, themselves, to us, was it last month or earlier this month? But they were incredible. It was fantastically hard to pick one over the other, and my compliments to them and to the people that recommended them. I'm sure throughout the next year, they will share a great deal of information with us on the board and the community.
Yeah, just as a add-on, we actually interviewed three students that night. Yeah, Mr. Stoloff, but the comments, yeah, the comments are equally, equal for all three of those candidates. We end up, just as FYI, two of them end up as school board reps, third will go to we off. So, all three of the candidates were stellar, and it was, it was frankly difficult to decide amongst them. But again, I think that just speaks about the quality of students that we have here at our school district.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next, I ask board members to pull out the blue sheet. And the next motion is in regards to the collective bargaining agreement. I would like to make a motion for approval of collective bargaining agreement between the Wissickin Educational Alliance Professional and the Wissickin School District over the time period of July 1st, 2016 until June 30th, 2019, subject to administration and solicitor approval on the final wording per document 7.1. So moved.
So moved. Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to take this moment to thank all of our administrators, our board reps that went to these meetings, and also the union reps for being able to come together and put this agreement together. I think this will be very good moving forward, and I just wanted to thank everyone for their dedication and time.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Any other guests?
Okay, I too would like to thank everyone who worked, have this come together in my long time at Wissickin. I think this is the first time we've had an agreement for, on time, perhaps.
And I have another comment. I want to, again, compliment everyone who was involved in this, and there's something to be said when the agreement is made before the end of the school year. Not only does it make everyone comfortable and serene and less nervous going into the next year, but it also shows that both sides were reasonable. No one walked away from this bargaining whistling the tune that "I got you." Both sides were satisfied, which is the ultimate compromise. And again, my compliments.
Thank you, Mr. Stoloff. And actually, I know, Dr. Chrisfield, you are very focused on character education. As someone who had the opportunity to sit in those meetings, I think that we would have made you proud because there was a lot of respect and kindness and consideration to the needs of both groups, so, yeah, us. Now, are there any other comments? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Next, we have report of the superintendent, Dr. Chrisfield.
Thank you. Yes, I am indeed impressed by the role modeling here of both character education, but also of the concept of compromise. I think we can all think of other political entities elsewhere in our society who could learn a few things from that particular embrace. Just a few things to report. We've had a great school year, and I'm happy and proud to report that tomorrow, every single student will be in attendance, like every single staff member, learning lots and making sure that the very final day is an excellent one to round out the perfect year. Congratulations to the class of 2016, a really excellent graduation ceremony, attended by some here tonight, and beautiful weather, and really, it's quite a nice spectacle to see out there. And lastly, a little teaser alert that come the fall, you should pay attention to some ideas we have to celebrate a district birthday, and Ms. Rollings is busy putting some things together for a important birthday celebration to include some festivities and whatnot. So, that's all you get on that right now. You have to wait and come back into fall for more.
Thank you, Dr. Chrisfield. Next, report of the assistant superintendent, Mr. Abimot.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. And over the last several weeks, our faculty and administration have been planning and conducting many end-of-the-year celebratory events. We've been to concerts, student work showcases, award and scholarship programs, farewell, promotion, and graduation ceremonies, and just some pure fun events, too. I want to acknowledge the many hours of planning and fretting that go into such events, and thank our teachers, administrators, and the many parent volunteers for making the end-of-year Wissickin both meaningful and memorable for our students and their families. Not only have we been busy in our efforts to conclude the 1516 school year, but many of us have been planning ahead. Tonight, you'll be voting to welcome new members to our district faculty for the 2016-17 school year. Mrs. Rossi and I have worked closely with our administrative team to conduct classroom visits and to see all of our current long-term substitutes in action. We've attended university, college, and the Montgomery County IU career fairs to meet some very promising teacher candidates, and we've conducted well over 75 in-district interviews and follow-up in-class demonstration lessons done right here in our own Wissickin classroom. All of this has been done in order to recommend to the board the absolute best and most capable educators to join our team. Some great work has been accomplished in this regard, and we look forward to welcoming these educators to the Wissickin School District this August. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abimot. Next, report of the solicitor, Mr. Walpert.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. If one item, it's a recommendation for approval of the stipulation and order of settlement in a commercial tax assessment appeal per document eight. It is docket number 2003-2302. I would respectfully request a motion.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments, questions? Not all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Walpert. Report on committee meetings. We'll start with Communications Committee, Mr. Antonio.
No report this evening.
Curriculum and Technology Committee, Mrs. Hayman.
The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on May 26 at 5:30 PM in the administrative
Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mrs. Walsh.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. The Facilities and Transportation Committee met on June 6 at 5:30 PM in the administrative offices. Some of the items we discussed were the project bid opening results for concrete sidewalk and replacement of a hot water heater tank, some district-wide summer projects, natural gas purchasing, which I believe we will be voting on a little later tonight. The Facilities and Transportation Committee will meet again on August 8 at 5:30 PM in the administrative offices. Again, all are welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Finance Committee, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. The Finance Committee met on June 8 at 5:30 here in the administrative building, administration building. We reviewed the finalizing of the milligrade increase for the 1717 budget. The next meeting, actually, we don't have a next, well, I have.
In September. IU Legislative Committee, Mr. Stoloff.
Yes, the IU Legislative Committee will meet again on June 23 at 7:30 PM at intermediate unit in Norris Town.
Thank you, Mr. Stoloff. Next, IU Board of Directors, which is myself. We met on May 25, 2016 at 7 PM in the intermediate unit. You all received your MCIU highlights. Basically, it was board business as usual, budget approvals and contracts and service agreements. Nothing more to share. The IU Board of Directors will meet on June 22, 2016 at 7 PM in the intermediate unit. Next, we have the North Monco Technical Career Center, Mrs. Hayman and Mr. Stoloff.
Joint Operating Committee will meet on June 20 at 7 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Hayman. Policy Committee, Mr. Stoloff.
Okay, we have a major group of items to discuss and to vote on. There are, the first is the Activities Conflict of Interest Policy, and that is item B1. If I could have a motion for that?
On the agenda, they are identified together.
Go all through, you mean, as a lump? All right.
Okay.
And then the travel reimbursement federal program, so that follows federal guidelines outside, rather, then the district-wide Title I parental involvement and non, parental involvement, which is always a goal, and the nondiscrimination transgender and general gender expansive student policies, and these are all per documents B1 through B5. If I could have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, Dr. Becker, I'm wondering if it's, so, two questions. One is from Mr. Walpert. Is it a requirement that the federal fiscal compliance and any of these other policies be voted on simultaneously, or can they be voted on separately?
They can all be voted on separately. They're listed in the agenda together, but they can be broken up.
So, I'd like to, if I could make a motion that each of these items be voted on separately?
So, there's a procedural motion to separate these individual policies and vote our policies, is that correct?
Correct.
The motion has been moved and seconded, correct?
Seconded.
All those in favors? Oh, my bad. Is there a discussion regarding breaking the policy apart for approval?
They're all going to be voted on, it's just the breaking them apart is the difference.
So, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Motion pass.
I would suggest that we take these in the order they're listed, which is B1 first.
So, let us have a motion for approval at the second and final reading on federal fiscal compliance.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Okay, the next is travel reimbursement for federal programs.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Okay, and the third is outside activities and conflict of interest.
So moved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Not all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
And the next is nondiscrimination transgender and gender expansive student policies.
We have district-wide Title I parental involvement. Policy 917.1.
That's before, so moved.
Second.
Did we pronounce it clearly enough?
District-wide Title I parental involvement.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Motion pass.
Okay, next is the nondiscrimination transgender and general expansive student policies per document.
So moved. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, Dr. Becker, I do have a comment and probably a question at the end. So, I think in general, I understand, and I understand the concept behind the nondiscrimination transgender and gender expansive student policies. I think where I'm struggling, frankly, and I don't know if there's an opportunity for us to take this out to another policy committee and have further discussion around it, is that, you know, as a, as a school board member and also a father of three kids, the question in my mind, and the simple question I have in my mind, is that those that are born female and those that are born male have different parts. And at different times during a child's high school career, there are, there are times where, you know, our facilities, whether they be locker room or restrooms, are built and established for personal privacy for folks with certain parts. And where I'm struggling is the concept of how we as a district manage, or how administrators and teachers manage this idea of individual personal privacy, and my child or someone else's child being in a locker room or a bathroom where, whether purposefully or inadvertently, someone that is transgender is in that room and they, right, I mean, we are, you know, I don't, wouldn't want my children exposed to someone of a different sex, whether they're transgender or not philosophically. My children are still young, but it's that whole concept that I'm struggling with because I understand the concept of nondiscrimination. I don't walk in your shoes, and, you know, frankly, I don't know how, what strength I would need to muster to be able to walk in your shoes. I would need to muster to be able to walk in your shoes. But it's the whole concept of personal privacy and how do we manage that? And my fear is, I don't know that it's fear, my concern is that this policy maybe doesn't adequately address that concept of providing individual personal privacy. And that's my only concern. It's just this idea that I have in my mind of an eighth, ninth, 10th grader being in a restroom or a locker room and seeing things maybe they shouldn't be seeing at that age or seeing things that they're not prepared to see at that age. And how do we, like, manage that, but at the same time, you know, respect those that are transgender or gender neutral? I don't know the answer to that frankly, and I don't know if it does us as a board a service to go back and maybe discuss further, I don't know. I don't know. I'm just at a point where I don't know that this is the right thing, but I don't know that it's a wrong thing. I just, and there's, to me, there needs to be some fair equitable middle ground to manage that. And I'll leave it at that. I just don't know beyond that. The reality for me is that those that are born as male and those that are born as female have different parts. And, you know, how do we respect someone's personal privacy and at the same time, respect people's, you know, gender identification?
Okay, if I may comment shortly on that. One of the, not that you're saying this, but one of the comments made by the general public is that boys will dress as a girl to go into the boys' locker room to see naked or semi-naked girl students. You have to consider what that student would have to be saying and doing just to get into that locker room when you may have heard that the internet is rather chock full of plenty of naked pictures. And one does not have to risk their entire reputation, if not their very lives, to get into the girls' locker room. And the same would work for the boys' locker room. Also, in the policy, if any student, whether trans or, I believe the term is cis, thank you, who feels uncomfortable in this situation, can ask for a screen so that they do not have to see what the other half was given by God, which they no longer identify with. Also with bathrooms, certainly in the ladies' rooms, not that I've spent very much time in them, but my understanding that each individual goes into a stall and closes the door so that no one else knows what's going on in that stall. And the same would apply in the boys' rooms. So I don't think there is that much of a danger of the fear of child molesting and people just trying to make this into a peep show. What we're trying to do is help the students that are in Weshickin who live as they feel they are. They're not doing this just to get a peep. They're doing this because this is who they are.
Well, Mr. Stoloff, I appreciate that. I'm not suggesting any of that frankly. My only question is, how do we manage the individual personal privacy of a teenage girl or a teenage boy? And how do we prohibit or prevent someone seeing something that maybe they should or shouldn't be seeing at that age? Whether, right, I mean, as a school district, it's our responsibility to respect everyone's personal privacy. How do we manage that? I'm not, you know, I appreciate your points, I don't know that I, my perspective is any of that. I'm questioning how we manage that because men and women have different parts. And that's all. And if the majority of this vote feels that this policy addresses that, then so be it. If the majority of the board thinks we need to go back and rediscuss, that's fine too. I'm only expressing kind of my concern with the policy generally about how we go about respecting someone's personal privacy or the chance that a child may see something they probably shouldn't be seeing accidentally or otherwise. How do we handle that? That's kind of...
Okay, can I just make a comment? The issue that I have with all of this is that I thought at our last meeting, and I guess this is, I don't know if I'm misunderstanding, I thought at our last meeting, we had some questions that we wanted to ask, and I thought this was going to go back into policy before it came back for a second reading so that we can have further discussion other than just adding the items. And I think that that's where I would want it to go, back into policy so we can find out exactly how we're going to enact this to handle everyone's needs. I would be more comfortable with that. And I'm not saying that we wouldn't do this or that we would do this. I'm just saying that I think that my personal opinion is it should go back into policy so we can hammer down all of the details on how this will be handled so we have no issues arise in the future. Instead of just passing something, you know, that maybe everybody else is passing, but I want to make sure that we have this right so there's no problems in the future with this.
I can shed some light on these questions. First, I'd recommend that we take a step backwards from the details a little bit. Policies aren't actually going to have those details in them. I can assure you, and I speak for all of the district leadership and all of the district administration, when we are confident we can protect all the students' privacy rights and we can ensure that all of our students feel comfortable in school. Way it would work as a policy is you would pass this policy, then direct us to make sure that happened. And I don't know if this helps with your decision-making or not, but I can speak on behalf of the entire district leadership team. We do feel that we can accomplish the things we're talking about in this policy.
Just to address a couple of points. One is that we had a very detailed policy committee discussion, and this policy derives from a number of other policies, which in my legal opinion are very sound policies. Some good questions tonight. We did discuss those issues at the policy committee level. Certainly, they can be discussed again at the board level. Just want to address two. One is in regard to the kind of legitimacy of the person's transgender status. That is addressed in the definition section, which is on page one, which identifies in the definition refers to one's internal sense of gender, which may be different from one's assigned sex and which is consistently and uniformly asserted most or all the time. That is something observable by the administration, observable by staff, and something that would be utilized. So we're looking for consistency there. In regard to the very good questions about the facilities, so we're talking about restrooms, locker rooms, changing facilities, it really comes down to a couple of points. Number one is the premise that district students shall have access to facilities, including restrooms, et cetera, that correspond to their gender identity. And that is the key statement in this section, because of the premise that transgender students are subject to the protections of Title IX as a protected class. And then to address the concerns about other students, whether they're comfortable or not comfortable, in this policy, we have sections about in any gender segregated facility, if a student is uncomfortable, they can alert the administration, alert their teacher, alert somebody at the school, and they'll be provided with a safe and reasonable alternative. And then we list actually, not all, but some alternatives, privacy partitions, curtains, nearby private restroom or office, separate changing schedule or facility. And there's ways to address this, and frankly, this has been addressed and implemented in other districts, both in Pennsylvania as well as nationally. And then finally, there can be a request of the transgender student to use a separate restroom or changing area, but they can't be required to do that under this policy. And that's again, based on that avoidance of any type of discriminatory conduct. So there are details certainly that would have to be implemented. What I heard at the policy committee level from the administration, and there was a lot of work to get to the policy committee level between me and the various administrators in discussions, was that it can be implemented. It's been, to a degree, already implemented, albeit not in policy form. And this is something the district can do, and I think do very effectively, based on what I've heard. So good questions, but we believe that what has been raised has been addressed already. This, lastly, Mrs. Walsh, my understanding was just to make those two changes, that's what I did. So certainly, the board would have the right to send it back to policy if the board desires.
Yeah, I think, if I could comment, I think the policy is well-written. It addresses the privacy issues and has adequate latitude for the administration and school personnel to deal with privacy and provide it where students feel like they need that or want that. This is more about tolerance and acceptance, I think, and I think it's an excellent policy and this is the time to pass it. My feeling.
Are there any other comments?
I do have a question. I'm sorry. Okay, so if we're in a locker room and a transgender student is in the locker room and the rest of the team feels uncomfortable and goes to their coach or their principal or whoever they're supposed to go to, and they say, "We are uncomfortable with this situation." So the school will then take action to correct that and make them comfortable, but then in doing that, we might be entering some vicious cycle where then the transgender student is now made uncomfortable because everyone else was uncomfortable and things are being changed both ways? Like, how are we going to handle stuff like that?
Just from a legal perspective and a factual perspective, that could happen. However, I would suggest the likelihood is fairly low if you're talking about a collective group. But if it did happen, what would, the result would be the transgender student has the right to be in that facility, and if others are uncomfortable, whether temporary or for some greater period of time, they would, there'd be some accommodation, they would go somewhere else. I just also like to point out that in this policy, in the delegation of responsibility section, there's a training and professional development section in which there will be ongoing training and professional development and support for the important principles here that are anti-discrimination principles. And that training also is something that's going to be provided, whether directly or indirectly, to students as far as tolerance. It already occurs in a district regarding special education students and other district policies that are anti-discrimination policies, and hopefully that would alleviate the situation that was just described from happening.
Another point I forgot to make was that I think as far as students, teenagers, seeing something that they may not be ready to see, hopefully I'm not giving any secrets away that at this point, most of them have had an introduction to reproductive biology in school already. If they can, I'm told that in some regards, it falls short of where it should be, but still, they've been exposed to sex education already. So they have some capacity to deal with what they may or may not see.
Ready to take a vote? All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion pass.
Policy.
I think you have to...
Okay, and now we have to kill an old policy. And that is for the deletion of the old federal fiscal compliance and the outside activities and district-wide Title I parental involvement policies and guidelines.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
And the policy committee will meet again on September 28 at 5:30 in the administration offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoloff, for that very thorough and interesting report. Next, we have the committee meeting minutes. I would like a motion for approval of the May 18 Policy Committee, May 26 Curriculum and Technology, June 6, 2016, Facilities and Transportation Committee meeting minutes per documents B6 through B8. So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any corrections to the minute? All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Minutes are approved. Motion passes. Next, report on personnel, Mrs. Rossi.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. I'd like to request approval of motions A through I per documents C1 through C9. There are items included on the blue sheet that you should take notice of. And in particular, we will be voting on our typical motions, but also the support staff, a support staff job description change. Also additions to the fall curricular job descriptions. We're adding both a boys' and girls' cross-country assistant, and we're also adding a water polo head for the girls' team. In addition, you are approving extended school year and GIEP and IEP writing time for the summer. Also, the confidential employee salaries and the WASA employee salaries, which are the Weshickin administrators. And just one additional item for STS so that we can hire substitute secretarial position.
So moved.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any comments?
Yes, as part of the personnel resolution, we have a couple retirements, and I'd like to say a few words about Alice Noon, one of the retirees. Alice Noon has been employed as a bus driver with the school district since 1991. That's 25 years. And Alice has always been well-liked by parents and students because of her willingness to get to know each and every one of them each new school year. As a bus driver, transportation provider, you want individuals who are able to adapt to new situations, and Alice is someone who can do that all the time. And she's one of those bus drivers who's been providing great service to our students and families for the 25 years been with the district. And the board and administration would like to congratulate her on her retirement and thank her for her service to the entire Weshickin community. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Are there any other comments? So all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion's passed.
Thank you.
Next, we have report on student and instructional activities. Mr. Abimot.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. And before I begin, let me just clarify related to the comment in public that the oral language exploratory will continue to run next year as it has in the past. The 7 to 12 is a reflection of the curricular areas that were revised and changed, modified. So that's what we're speaking about when we talk this evening. I'm requesting approval of motions 13A through K per document D1 through D15. The motions include the approval of planned courses of study resulting from the completion of Stage 2 of the Weshickin School District Curriculum Review Process for Social Studies K12 and oral language grades 7 to 12. The approval to adopt and purchase the instructional resources to support the delivery of these revised curricula. The annual purchase of the web-based measure of academic progress, better known as MAP, for the 2016-17 school year. I do want to note that this includes the addition of the K and 1 testing program for reading and math. It's a return to something we had in the past. We dropped it for a while due to the fact that the younger grades were using the Macs, and it was a web-based platform on a Windows platform. Now with Windows machines in all of our classes, we're confident that that will be better used and better run. Also, the approval of the extension of the Wilson Reading System certification training to benefit our students receiving special education and reading intervention services. The approval of the finalist for 2015-16 of those students whose tuition has been waived in the district. The approval to run the Weshickin High School courses with low enrollment. And extended school year services and/or tuition for special education students at private placements. And finally, a contract with Lakeside Educational Network to provide one full-time Lakeside in-school counselor for the 16-17 school year to provide crisis counseling services to the students of Weshickin High School who need them.
So moved.
They're moved.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion's passed. Next, we have report on plan and equipment, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you very much. We request approval of motions A, B, C, and D, excuse me, A, B, C, D, and E, per document E1 through E4, which are items that we discussed at the facilities meeting, in addition to the normal disposal of excess and obsolete equipment.
Second.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion's passed.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Report on finance, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you very much. The first item is the request for approval of list of payments issued for the month ending May 31, 2016, per document F1.
They're moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments?
Yes, there are. I am abstaining from voting from this motion due to my employment with an involved vendor. I will submit this abstention in writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passed.
Thank you. The next is a request for approval of motions B, C, D, E, F, and G, per documents F2 through F6, which were all discussed at the last finance meeting. Thank you.
They're moved.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion's passed.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Next, we have public comments. Are there any additional public comments for the evening?
Were there any more comments? Can I just say, I just want to know what just happened with the transgender. Are you allowed to talk to me and explain to me what happened? You voted and it's passed? Is there any way we can fight that?
What happened tonight was, ma'am, to answer your question, there was a second reading of the transgender policy. That is a new policy in the district, and based on what occurred tonight, there was a board approval of that policy, so that policy will be in effect and available on the district's website. Certainly, when you ask about fighting or commenting about it, you would have the right to communicate with administration and board members about your viewpoints. You can certainly appear at the board meetings and public meetings and convey your viewpoints. Again, just because the policy has passed doesn't preclude you from commenting in the future, but tonight, the policy was passed.
Which means that as of tomorrow, boys and girls can choose at the moment of their gender where they want to go.
Yes, but school's out tomorrow, so it'll be September.
Starting in September, and one, less than 1% is transgender, so now you went 1% versus 99%. Okay, thank you.
Are there any board comments?
Yes, I have a couple. I want to congratulate the board on its courage and also its decision to do the right thing in passing the policy. Also, I would like to compliment all the graduates, the class of 2016, and the administrators who ran the graduation, and it was incredibly well-organized. And I most especially want to compliment the students with the beach balls at the graduation. Beach, if you haven't been to a graduation within the last 15, 20 years, you may not be aware that one of the requirements at the graduation is at least one, if not several, beach balls that are tossed around in the student area, and the teachers spend most of their time hunting down the balls and trying to get control of them. But what was amazing at the graduation the other night is the decorum of the beach ball handlers. The beach balls only appeared between events. As far as I remember, I did not see a beach ball in the air during anyone speaking or any other activities. And so again, my compliments to the class of 2016 and to the class of 2017, I, we're going to be looking for those beach balls. Don't try it.
Just a point of clarification, the beach ball being a requirement is an unsanctioned comment, and that's something I'm unaware of. I'll have to do a little more research into this matter.
Yeah, I have a, I have just a quick comment. So regarding the transgender policy that we passed, Dr. Chrisfield, from an expectation standpoint, and my rationale for not voting against that policy was primarily because of the support, and I guess belief I have in you and your administrators, your principals, your assistant principals, and your teachers, in managing appropriately through that policy to make sure that every student, irrespective of their gender, their identity, sexual preference, whatever it may be, are treated equally in a nondiscriminatory fashion across our Wissahickin school districts and within any of our facilities. You know, I, from a, on a personal level, I still have my own personal struggles with it, but I have to rest and give confidence to you and your administrators that you're going to manage that policy appropriately, so, yep.
I did have one other thing. I wanted to first echo off of what Joe was just talking about, and that not only will everyone be treated equally, but they will also be treated, whereas they're all comfortable in the situation. That's what I'm relying on. And on a lighter note, I just wanted everyone to take a look at our shirts, the new logos, to make sure everyone knew that, I believe the store just closed, closed June 10, but it will be reopening. Do we know when?
We'll open it at the start of school.
We will open it at the start of school, so everyone can purchase, not just these shirts, but many, many items with all of our new logos on them. So just be aware that it will be out there starting in September, and I will tell you that these will make wonderful holiday gifts for everyone's children. Thank you.
Any other comments? Could I please have a recommendation for approval of adjournment of this meeting?
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.